Meeting of the New Windsor Planning Commission. Welcome to everybody out there that's decided to watch us. And we work from an agenda. If there's anything you would like to have on the agendas, you could kind of send an email about a week or so ahead of time. I usually put it together. But I can understand the confusion as to who to reach out to. Contact one in doubt, you can send to Garrett somebody. Sorry for that confusion. Not personally. So our first order of business is approval of the minutes from our last meeting. I have one about my name, so currently.
I actually sent that to Dana. She said she would fix it, but she's just not here.
All right. Can I get a motion to?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Approved by Kevin.
Second.
Second by you. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, y'all have it six zero. Oh, she did slide in here the annual report. So. I apologize to the group. Did anybody get a chance to glance at that? Or had a feeling?
Yeah, yeah.
We got to get you a life. You're sitting on that internet pretty regularly.
Yeah.
Yeah. I sent out the annual report of the counties. It's one of these annual rubber stamp essentially from us that is in agreement with our comprehensive plan. The information provided in there for New Windsor comes from Garrett, from the town manager. It did come out in December. You were conscientious. You sent it with plenty of notice. Unfortunately, that's my fault. They got caught in this stuff. And then apparently with the new email, I thought I sent things to people and they didn't get out. So I think I've got that solved. Believe it or not, it's a very different layout than other. I did go out today and I have a letter here that we'll have to get a vote from the Planning Commission. Somebody to make a motion to accept the annual plan. And we can have discussion about accepting it or not accepting it if the commission would like to go and have the time to review it. And so the two of us have looked at it. So what's the pleasure?
Make a motion we accept the annual plan.
Second.
A motion by Drew, second by Glenn. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, six zero. There you go. And then if you could scan a copy of that back to Dana.
Got you.
Yeah, so that way we have all. Thank you for your patience, old man. I know you brought it up last night.
Oh, yeah, no problem. Yeah, on my side. Just, I just put the worksheets and letters on the end, so.
Sure. And I know you need that. That's part of pulling it together from all the municipalities. But the main thing is that you get from Gary what he needs in there or any updates in there. So you could have it in there. So our next order of business are updates from Randolph.
Um, thank you very much. My main thing is housing study. Right now, we're at the stage where we have our consultant working with Mosaic. And they're requesting us to reach out to the towns to help schedule a community needs assessment meeting. Kind of just going over the general study, what they're trying to look for from the different towns. But they want to go town to town first and kind of work inward, go outward. So they were thinking of events or some meetings that are already happening in the town that Mosaic can kind of attach on to and then do their thing before or after. I knew you guys mentioned a carnival, fire department carnival.
So is this something where you would want a room like this?
Um, they gave us pretty, I don't know if you want to see, this was kind of an overview.
Well, I'm not the one that would schedule. What would happen is you need to go through the town, through Gary.
Yeah.
And then somebody on his staff, I'm not sure if it's Kim or not, could arrange it. But, you know, and I know they were, that she would, that Dana would look at this. So if it's something like this kind of room that you're thinking, then you have your meetings of the town council that is the first Wednesday of each month. It could be before that or after that, I would assume. But they will be the ones that could schedule. If you're looking to do it with some kind of a town event where it's more outside, if that's the thought, then.
Community citizen.
Yep. Then I certainly think the carnival could be, you know, a possibility. There's also different things. There's bingo and other things that go on up at the fire hall. They're the ones also running, sponsoring the carnival. Other than that, I think Town Beautification Day, there's not a whole lot of people come for that.
Right, okay, that's good to know.
Didn't they set up like a booth that we usually go in the main?
Well, that's a little further down the road. I don't know if it's got that kind of a town because that's not until October.
They did one last year, right? Because Janet was there from the county.
I know they did one here, but I can't really put it together.
Yeah, it's kind of a push. They want to do it early April or April to early May. So between that.
Well, carnival's not until the end of May.
Right, and that would be fine from what I consider.
And to do that, that's fire department. But again, I would suggest reaching out first to Gary to see. Because I, and there, and then even for the fire department.
I'll give you a contact, Randolph. I'll give you a contact name that you can contact if, yeah, if Gary, going through Gary and see what he says. But you get a lot of foot traffic if that's what you're looking for, community participation. Yeah.
That's exactly what.
National night out is also another really good time to catch that.
That's in August though, right?
It's not till August though.
Early August, but that's, that is another time.
I'd love to get a lot of outdoor activities in April. We don't have that many.
Snow removals.
Yes, snow removals.
Have they had the Easter egg hunt yet? The Lions had their.
Yeah.
Or is that the Saturday coming up?
Might very well be.
Yeah, it's coming Saturday.
So as far as foot traffic, you guys saying the carnival would be a better, I think.
You want to do something relatively quickly, yes. That's a good point about the Easter egg hunt.
A one night, one night event.
Yes.
Okay, because that runs for five days. So I guess you could pick whatever, you know.
Yeah, because they wanted a few different events because they're planning to try to knock a few out at a time. Because they're basically, so they don't want to fly, I guess, back and forth.
They have local offices here.
Um, you would think, you would think.
What did you say the goal of their?
The first, this was, did you want to copy? This had like the work scope on the back.
I would like to read it.
Yeah, I had an extra copy.
Okay.
I could email it to you.
Okay.
Distribute it. But they just want to get initial reaction from the citizens about what some needs would be in the town regarding housing.
They, I have interviewed with Mosaic. I know where there's a place in like Rockville. I know there's also one in Baltimore. Oh, yeah, they're, they're, I don't know if they're national, but they're loose on the coast.
Okay.
But, you know, if they're coming out of the corporate office, that's not necessarily the same thing as the local staff. So there's the possibility of the carnival. And those dates are the 21st and 25th of May.
Yeah, I'll say I'm writing this all down here, so.
And I think you've got Randolph's email address.
Yes, yeah, well, I'm doing it fast. I'm writing it down. I'll hand it to you.
And would you say?
Is my question?
Yeah.
Like, do we know or like those weekly events at the fire department, would we have more foot traffic?
There's definitely more than Town Beautification Day.
Yeah, and, but we draw a lot of people from Westminster, Tony. Yeah, it's, as far as New Windsor residents, it's just a handful really. That, to me, that wouldn't be a, you know, if your timeline doesn't suit, you know, if you need to do something before, yeah, yes, you could do that. So don't know what the participation would be.
Right, that makes sense.
Oh, there's a, there's, it's on the Fire Department's website. They're having some kind, it's about a nine eight eight, some kind of, something with the Sheriff's Department. I'm trying to think when that is. I don't know whether.
The National Night Out?
No, it's something to do with.
Suicide prevention?
Prevention, yes. It's some kind of an interactive thing with the Sheriff's Department and the Fire Department. It's on our website. I just, I don't know. It's, it's in our social hall. I don't know whether.
Is there any kind of a town update session that there might be going on, Dave, for the?
We're trying to schedule one with the state for the streetscape, but that has not been scheduled yet. And I don't know if that'll happen. We're already pushing April here, so I'm thinking it may not. You know, they're really, this, this group is looking for, to do a study on unique housing conditions and needs in each Carroll County municipality as well as incorporated areas. So, you know, they really were looking to have some refreshments and bring people in and talk about housing needs and things like that. Something like the carnival, if they had a table set up and were able to draw people over, they, they could simply ask the question, where are you from? First of all, because you know, it's not just New Windsor people that go there. They're going to get a pretty good swath of people that may help them in the, in the long run in their surveys that they're, that they're trying to do.
You're one of the earlier carnivals, aren't you now?
We're the first.
So they won't have, they're, if they're waiting for some of the other places, they're going to wait till Labor Day. You know, these go all summer long. So this would be a good one for them if they don't mind having non-New Windsorites also respond. New Windsorians?
I was wondering.
I think, I think New Windsorians.
I like it.
I think that's what we'll call them.
If you want to send that in electronically, but you know, I would touch base with the town. I don't think that we're going to have an event before the, the fire carnival that may meet that. You know, a good night to do it may be parade night.
Yeah, everybody will be out for that.
Yeah.
Parade night, parade night is the Wednesday night of the carnival.
The 20 second.
And that's the, probably the, one of the biggest draws.
As long as it doesn't keep the plus traffic, would probably get more New Windsorians.
Yes.
Traffic, a lot of people walk in.
Yeah, yeah. And most of them are from here.
Right.
As opposed to those people who go to every single carnival all summer long. Put a gun to my head.
Would it, this possibly be something that Randolph came to the next town council meeting? And said something, because people do watch online. That would be another.
I don't think that's going to meet the needs of what they're.
No, I agree, but if you announce that we're going to be doing it, that, you know, if we're able to arrange something between now and the week on Wednesday, that's the next town council meeting. And if he's, okay, he's going to be there at the carnival if he came and said something. Because he's coming from county.
Possibly if things were able to get arranged that quick.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's pretty tough.
And I know it'd be a pain to be another night, but on the first Wednesday of each month, they have the town council meeting. And I do know some, but I think there's a pretty safe number of people who watch online. But that would be a way to get a message and help also around it. And then, of course, just being there, that, that's really the point during the parade night. That is, that's the busy night and that's where you will be able to get a lot of people.
Don't participate anymore than they did for the census.
I'm going to give people a break for the census. It was the height of the pandemic. How likely are, but how likely are you going to be to open your door to a stranger?
But you had the ability to do it online.
Yeah, ours was online, what we did, yeah.
Yeah.
How they.
And the number was higher than the 2010 census by about 50. So it was pretty close to equally not participating both groups. But we'll get to that in a few moments. Do you have anything else?
Um, no, the last update is prices accepting requests for the spring amendment for the water reservoir. So.
Request for additional funding. Okay, well, thank you. Any updates for the town council today?
Yes.
All right.
So the last meeting, I mentioned to you that there was preliminary discussion between the town and the New Windsor Fire Department on possibly utilizing the Old Town Hall next door to us for, to turn it into apartments for the fire department first responders, kind of a low rent opportunities. And we had our first task team, task force team meeting between the town and the fire department the other day. And we took the, the firemen through the building, took a look at, you know, compared to the, the plans that they had had an architect kind of draw for them of making two, two bedroom apartments. So it'd be a total of four, maybe volunteers that could live there that would be able to quickly respond. And they would have some lower, lower income housing that they could live in. So we had that kickoff meeting and, you know, decided that it was, you know, something that we were going to try to pursue. I participated this morning in a meeting with the Department of, the Department of, who were they? Housing and Community Development. They're the ones that have both loans and grants for things like this. We're not real excited about trying to get a loan for the project. We're looking for grants and it actually fit very well into the grant programs that they have. Lots of areas that we would get high points when we put in a, a grant application for it. So it was a very promising meeting this morning. So we'll be moving forward, I think, looking at going for a grant. But in the meantime, we have to get some cost estimates to put together of what a project like that would cost. So we need to have a, maybe probably a structural engineer come in. We need to have, you know, electrical and things like that done. So we have a, a scope of, of work and what it might cost to, to turn that into bedrooms. There's a historical aspect also to these loans and, you know, keeping the facade of that, that building. And, and I think we would meet their, I mean, the inside's been changed. I can't tell you how many times, you know, since it's been there. So the inside, of course, would just have to be updated. If we kept the external facade, we would probably meet all the historical attributes that they, they request. But one of the things I had to take away from the meeting with the fire department is the zoning of it, right? To make sure that we could turn that into apartments. And so I did, and I reviewed our code and I'm pretty sure that it does. But I want to double check with, with, with you guys here. What I found was, of course, this is in the, the Village Center zoning, which means it's mixed use with residential being an allowed use. I found in our code, under permitted uses for the VC district, that multifamily dwellings are in there. And then specifically 215-64 says a VC conditional use is conversions of buildings to contain up to two dwelling units, provided the town manager certifies adequate water and wastewater facilities exist to support the units. So.
You said that was a conditional use or a permitted use?
That says it is a conditional use. So between that, I thought we were.
Yeah, we should be okay. And maybe, well, I'll take a look at it. I hadn't, I hadn't done that yet. If it's a conditional use, it just would have to go through the BZA, assuming we have one.
This has been a long time since we had a BZA hearing.
And you say that was just for two units?
It would be two units, one upstairs, one downstairs. There would be two bedroom units each.
Users.
But just two units.
So they would have like, you know, kitchenette, two bedrooms and a living area, bathroom, of course. And, and they had some plans drawn up that so that would fit in there. It's a workable design, but we're going to keep pursuing and, and see. And once we get our cost estimates together, submit to see if we can get some kind of grant to cover this funding. The state is also interested. There was a, a high level task force done for things like this that apparently was done and the fire department participated and other people participated. And it never went anywhere because I guess we were at the end of an administration. But I think Governor, Governor Moore's, it's on his, his projected doings as well. So I think things could line up that, that the town could get some money to actually do this project. So we'll see. Mayor Rup is heavily involved as, as well as the, the fire department, so. So that's that. If you, Michelle, you would just double check?
Yeah.
That for me, I would.
On my note.
Okay, I would appreciate that. The, the second thing that I wanted to bring up is there's some interest from a, a potential investor, business owner for the Dillman Inn. I actually had the, the, the pleasure of spending the morning with them in the, in the Dillman Inn this morning, looking at things. They brought their contractor and things like that in this morning. And he seems very, very interested in, in, in doing some things there. I guess my question that I came away with afterwards is I know that we had talked previously about making sure that in town we had our zoning to allow brewery, distillery, things like that. I can't find it in here, but I.
I'm not sure it actually ever got done.
Okay, that was.
Some of it didn't. I just don't remember.
Yeah, I, I don't think we've received updated pages for in here since maybe Donna's been around.
I'm not so sure that we, I think we talked about.
I think we talked about it.
My memory is that this group punted it back to the town council.
Which is where it would ultimately land. But I don't remember what the ball looked like when it was punted.
I don't know that we ever came to a decision. We were, we talked a lot of pro for it, but I don't know whether we ever took a vote and said, we recommend that they approve that, but we did say we needed something back.
What I recall is now that you're saying we punted it back to them, is we would need to make a recommendation for a change.
Yeah.
Well, what we would need to do is write every.
Recommendation for a change.
Because I don't think we had that as an allowable usage.
That's what I'm saying, is I don't think that the whole issue was ever legislatively addressed. But obviously, perhaps it will move to the front burner now.
I would think that we're a little bit behind the eight ball.
It doesn't take long.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be something I would think we should be able to do quickly if we needed to.
So we need to, whatever we need to do to push that to the forefront and get it done this time.
I've got two stars in my notes now.
Um, we need to make sure that that happens.
That'd be nice.
Quickly. I just wouldn't want that to be a deterrent to anybody's final decisions on whether they want to make an investment in that building.
That kind of, that kind of zoning modification is not complex time wise to do.
Yeah, I reviewed the, the code this morning when I got home and I was like, I don't think we ever finished it. Was my recollection as well.
Every municipality in the county, I think, didn't have.
You might be the only one that doesn't have some kind of alcohol manufacturer.
Yes, I think we are.
We are behind the times.
Yes.
So we can talk about it here.
Yeah, we've done more right now.
Talk about the, you know, where, where we, the code section. And then we talk about the language. And we don't, is it that we make a recommendation to the town council? And then the, then there is something that's.
There isn't, there isn't a mandatory structure of who goes first. So if the council, well, let's just say we had never talked about it in this realm. The council could say, we want to have, any, any use, pick a use. You know, we want to have, you know, a peach pitting company move in there. And they would, you as a planning commission would review that change that could be either just reviewed, like whoever heard of a peach pitting company? Or here is an actual ordinance that you should review. You would then make a recommendation, fur peaches or a ginum? And the decision ultimately legislatively would go back to them. If you're sitting here and no one in the council has ever realized the importance of peach pitting to this community and you say to them, we really think we need to have, this is a use we need to have in this town, you could recommend to them. And then they would say to me, let's draft an ordinance. It could be, if doesn't, if you, if a recommendation came from you, I don't honestly know that it would even actually need to officially come back to you for a second recommendation of the text. It's always good to do that, but if Tempest is fugiting, we, we may not want to do that. So if there's a sense here now, at least conceptually, that this is a use that you would like to see the council visit as a possible modification to the zoning code, I think you could do that right tonight. I don't think that, there's anything that prohibits you from doing that. And if there is a sense next Wednesday, that they, that's the next council meeting, that they want to go ahead and do something like, like that, we could start drafting an ordinance at that point. And, you know, honestly, if the, the mayor calls the attorney's office and says, I want to take a look at an ordinance. Do you have any samples or can you put something together for me? Not, not formally to introduce necessarily, but, you know, what ideas there might be out there. We can do that without anything because that's essentially an executive and administrative. I think people ask me all the time, you know, what do you have? Can, can we look at, do you know any place that does this kind of stuff? Those things. So, yeah, we can, we can get that moved.
I, I know this group, I think it was this group, we've had this discussion.
We've talked about it.
And I think it was favorable, so.
I'm in favor of it if you want to ask again.
I think I'm seeing both sides pointing at me. Because.
You always have the biggest book, you know, so everybody points at you.
About it at the council level. The, the mayor has turned to me and said, we need to do this. And I brought it here and said, we need to do this. And we've had discussions and then it's just never, it's kind of like that, that starting cars in people's yards.
Motion that we like that and vote on it and then you take it with you then, right?
Well, we, we make a motion that we are in favor of whatever it is we're going to have in that motion.
That's the issue.
Yes, because I know you were the wordsmith talking about distilleries or breweries.
Well, there's distilleries and there's micro distilleries and there's nano distilleries and they're all different categories of license. But, well, I, with all respect to New Windsor, I think it unlikely that Makers Mark is going to come up here and open a distillery down the block. So you are almost certainly looking at a small scale. So you could put in your ordinance, and I've seen this in other jurisdictions in this county, micro breweries so that, so Sam Adams, who we know now is, is still privately owned, can come here. You could, you could, because it's not up to you what kind of license a brewer or distillery has. You know, that's a whole different game when you get into. You know, that's a whole different game when you get into, well, the liquor board and the state.
Yeah.
Um, but you could make us, as an allowable use, micro breweries, nano breweries, micro distilleries, et cetera. Not occupying more than.
Whatever the square footage is.
Feet, whatever it is, those kinds of things, if that is what you're looking for. If what you're looking for is also, uh, the possibilities of a tasting or tap room, you would wanna put that in the zoning ordinance, you're not, again, in control of that. That is a liquor board and a, and a state licensure issue. But you might wanna think about including that as a possibility when you're creating this authorization. So that even if four years from now, someone starts, I'm gonna go back to peaches. Someone starts a peach pitting operation down there and in three years wants to be able to offer peach cobbler. If you put it in the ordinance initially as purely pits, you gotta come back and change the ordinance to let them serve cobblers. So when you're crafting an ordinance like this, you wanna think about not just how to start, but what they might need to do in the future to make sure there isn't an inadvertent prohibition by not including it on the front end.
In your example, though, you're knowing the idea of writing something for that type of business. And then anticipating possible.
Other aspects of that business.
Bird migration. Do, so do we have a sense of what that type of business is and you can share it?
Yes, it would be a distillery, a distillery.
A distillery.
A distillery. I heard and saw plans. It looks like the building would contain a lounge of, of.
Should there be a tasting room?
Right.
So, you know, it would be that kind of, that kind of.
You want a fairly broad definition.
Yes, I would, I would think we do. I wouldn't, I don't know what else, you know.
We could still, we could still acknowledge that we wanna add that as a permitted use.
Yes.
Tonight, and then Michelle could work on the ordinance with all the details and get that out, correct?
I know when we talked before, and I know you started micro brewery, nano brewery, distillery. I don't recall that being a word that you used, but those are different kinds of businesses.
Yeah.
So, now that you're saying that, we can talk about what we wanna have in that phraseology that then you would take to the council, because it needs to be the council to get you started, correct?
Uh, it's preferable.
Yeah.
That's usually the pattern.
It was always you.
It's all, yeah, everything, all roads lead to Dave.
I don't know how that happens. I'm just a quiet guy.
The power you have, Dave, the power.
Well, I would, I, I, just in, in speaking, this, this gentleman was a distillery kind of guy. But I would think that I would like to make the ordinance open enough so we didn't have to come back and visit it when, uh, somebody else wants to put in a brewery of some kind, or, so.
And increasingly, you see both.
Right, right.
Microbrewery, micro distilleries.
Maybe I'm just really, cause I, I don't really buy that much. So, to me, a distillery is where you're manufacturing, but there's obviously gonna be a retail component.
Yeah, if you go to almost any distillery, there is a tour.
Yep.
And at the end of the tour, a very nice man or a woman pours you small tastes, all depending on the license that they have. And, you know, some places ha- have physical space to sit. Other places hand you the shot glass and point you to the, you know, the, the store at the, at the end of the tour, you know? You can't get out the door without going through the store, your basic tour, so.
So now you're talking not only of that liquid, but there are probably other things that go along with it.
Well, there may not be depending on the license, you know, like.
Yes.
There's, there, those licenses are so tight. Food is a whole different license.
Typically, food, no.
A lot of them have food trucks associated with them, though.
They bring a food truck in.
Common.
And how about smoking?
No.
No smoking is allowed in any buildings.
But there are bourbon and cigar.
Oh, okay.
But those are generally different, um, authorizations and different licenses.
One of Westminster, pint and puff. There's one in Westminster, the Davidas cigar, the pint and puff.
Oh, downtown? The one on Main Street?
Yeah. There's two or three distilleries in Frederick. I don't know whether they do cigars, but there's, there's.
And some do like one night or two nights a month and that kind of stuff. But I don't, I, I don't know that your ordinance needs to specify, you know, cigars are okay and no pipes, you know, I mean, I, I just don't, I don't know how detailed you really want to be. That actually is a council manic decision as well as a licensure decision. Yes, council manic is exactly a word. It's much more, much more gooder a word than the one I made up before.
Much more gooder, yeah.
So, Mr. Michelle, is, because you're, you're saying the ordinance, does that mean that we are doing more than just changing the permitted use within the, the village center?
It depends. It depends on what you want. You could, uh, for example, in, in your code, you've got bed and breakfasts as an allowable use.
Right.
But you've also got a section that is, for want of a better term, performance standards for what can be a bed and breakfast. And they're not in every, every section, every district that might allow a bed and breakfast. There's one section that says, bed and breakfast must be, you know, more than fifty years old or can't have more than four rooms and you can't stay for more than two weeks, whatever, whatever it says. So you could do that. I don't really know that that's necessary, but that's something we'd have to look at. Because as we've all finally agreed, we never got to the point of actually drafting anything.
Because in the VC permitted uses now, you know, it lists things. Churches, funeral homes, banks, medical services, retail stores, specialty shops, restaurant, neighborhood convenience uses, bed and breakfast, professional offices, and then, you know, multi-family, two-family and single-family. So, could it not be as easy as just distillery?
Yeah, adding the, the appropriate language. I'm not saying that.
Two, two.
No, most places just list them that way.
Yeah, that, why couldn't you just simplify and say, it, a permitted use is, uh, selling and manufacturing of beer, wine and alcohol, and then that just, then that cover everything?
Well, you gotta be careful, because you, you have to, if you're going to do it that way, you have to make sure that they are conjunctive and not just selling. Or, and see, you, you can sell what you make on the premises. Again, that is a licensing issue as much as anything else. But a bigger issue frankly, and the, cause the details of, of the, of the work, we can work out. Everyone is talking about a permitted use. So you gotta think about if you want it as a permitted use or you want it as a conditional use. If it's a conditional use, it is presumed to be valid. But the Board of Zoning Appeals has authority to impose certain other conditions, such as hours of operation and things like that, of course, so does the liquor board and the state. When you're talking, when you're talking alcohol, it's such a heavily regu- regulated industry, uh, that it, it kind of boggles. But, um, so the conditional permitted is a, is a legal issue, but it's an important one. Cause if it's a permitted issue, a permitted use in the village center and you wanna convert your house, you're in the village center still, aren't you? You can, and your neighbor's got nothing to say about it, cause it's a permitted use. Whereas if it's a conditional use, it has to come before the board, there has to be hearings about it. As a presumption that in the village center, it's a valid use. So long as it isn't more onerous at that location than it is at other locations within the village center. So, and, and I know that sounds like sophistry and to some extent, I understand that. But there is a big legal distinction between those two categories.
I would think we'd recommend a conditional use.
We have more, more control.
Yeah, I, I, it, there's just, uh, another level, another layer of review.
So under our, uh, conditional uses, there is B, light industrial manufacturing and assembly of electronics, um, electrical appliances, communication equipment, blah, 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 blah. And then it has those things that Michelle just talked about, that, you know, the, the processes and equipment should be limited to those which are not objectable by the reason of odor and dust, and it doesn't generate parking that burdensome to the area and, um, not overburden existing public services like water and sanitary stores and. So it sounds like it would go.
I think that's what you want.
In that area as well.
Council would also agree that that's preferable.
Yes. Okay. So it would probably just be adding a C, if, if there's nothing else.
It, it, it's not complex.
Okay.
This, this is the easiest thing. That, uh, anybody who wants to open that kind of business in the state of Maryland is gonna go through. This is the easiest thing.
So let's do whatever we do that we need to do tonight so that we could bring it up.
That's my point.
At the, um, Wednesday's meeting and then get it rolling, uh, so it's not a, stand in the way.
That there's a consensus that we would like to help facilitate this moving forward from the groups. So the crafting of what we say, it's not, it's something we vote on, right, or we don't?
Uh, you could, you could. In that way, it would be a little more formal. If part of the concern is to have this appear very clearly to be supported by, uh, the administration. You could, you could just say that you would recommend to the council that they, um, amend the zoning ordinance in whatever fashion would be appropriate to make the use of property in the village center a conditional use as a distillery or brewery at whatever scale they ultimately decide.
Well, I, I like distillery or brewery, cause that connotates the manufacturing.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Whereas what you were saying before, going and saying it's like a liquor store.
Yeah, that's, no, the manufacturing and the selling.
Well, the and is the important part.
Yeah, the manufacturing.
Just have, that's what I said. They just all have to, it, it, but we can, it's easy, it's not hard.
But the tweaking of the word isn't really from us.
No, you don't tweak.
Conceptually, we're saying.
We're the tweakers. You're the, you're, you're the idea guys, you know, and I'm the tweaker.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Tweaker but speaker.
I think, I, I like that, I think we should, and who was our scribe as to what? Cause we do have a recording of what Michelle just said.
I can capture that if you want.
Good, cause I never can say it again.
You wanna type the words in first so that you have it and then you can read it to us?
Yes.
What you're typing? No, you, Emily Ann.
Yeah, I know, have at it.
Yeah, if you'll type it in and then you can read it back to us and then we could help tweak that a little bit.
Okay, so I have modify the town ordinance to allow, to allow for the conditional manufacture and or sale of distilled spirits within the town center.
Not just distilled spirits, cause you also have breweries, cause they're not technically distilled. Meaderies are not technically distilled either. Not ordinary still wines. Now, if you're talking ports and things like that, sometimes those are distilled.
Okay, so maybe the conditional manufacture and or sale of alcohol?
No, I would, I would just say to allow for the use of properties, uh, in the village center as breweries or distilleries.
Okay.
And let them worry about the words.
You wanna also say in there which section to modify?
No, because, uh, I have to look at it and there may be more than one.
Oh, okay.
And or distilleries or breweries or distilleries?
Breweries and distilleries.
And or.
Well, just for this purpose, just and, we'll be fine.
Cause we're, this isn't a legal document. This is our recommendation.
Yeah, this is just an idea.
You read that back to us?
Modify the town ordinance to allow for the use of properties within the town center as breweries and distilleries.
Village Center. Cause Village Center is the name of the zoning district.
Village Center, okay.
Can I get a motion to accept that?
Motion to accept.
Motion from Kevin. Second by Drew. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, six zero.
To whom do I need to email this? Okay.
Always Dave.
Everything goes to Dave.
So then she'll have the words.
Yeah, cause she'll, she'll put it in the minutes.
She'll put it in the minutes. And you might as well, the Dave also, because he's the one that's gonna carry forward.
Okay.
Was that? Oh, I thought his voice just.
He was throwing his voices.
Yeah.
Was the man.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that'd be great. Well, but it, it depends on scale. Farking is always an issue in this town.
Just gonna ask me.
Stimulating.
We know a lot of brewers. We've got brewers. And one or two of our brewers were approached by, um, what's his, which, which stand boy is it that runs that place? Gary?
Jerry.
Jerry, yeah, Jerry Standby, about that, before he started it. And we all, all of us who know everything, sat around saying, Jesus, he wants to put a brewery and little stores in the middle of Union Bridge in the flood zone. You can't get within a mile of the place. It's unbelievable.
Okay, all right, last thing I wanna bring up. At the, at the request of the Planning Committee Chairman Mark, um, during budget time, he asked me about, um, our stipend that we receive as, uh, planning commission members. And, um, Mark said, mentioned that it hadn't been changed in eons and that, uh, you know, see if there's an appetite to, to change that to fifty dollars a meeting. And, and, uh, I presented it to Gary and the town council and Mark al- also approached the mayor about it. And, um, it did make it into the budget. So that, um, starting July one, uh, the new budget year, the new stipend will be fifty dollars. I mean, so you guys have to work that much harder.
Start, I was gonna say, start planning your retirement now. To any place over there. Yeah, no, I don't know where it is, but I haven't been over there.
Good.
Yeah. Why, we, uh, we usually wind up at Pub Dog, cause it's some, two miles from our house. And we know George, we've known George forever. Because he needs a local licensed guy.
I'm gonna give her my computer.
Okay. And while that's happening, um, ran off, like, three hours before you sent something to me. I have a friend of mine who's just retired and he's working on something. And he started to uncover some keys to finding something to send to me. So between him and what you have sent.
Yeah, no, I am very good at.
Pass this around to everybody.
Although it doesn't seem to be.
The light just turned. That's good.
Hey, Dave.
My apologies if I make anybody dizzy, cause.
You take one in the passenger.
Oh, yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, that's what I meant, but I got confused, cause it's two directional.
Where we are, that's to be honest with you. There you go.
You don't wanna look through the back of your head, Dave? Anyway, yeah.
Thank you, sir. Just, that's between you and me. I mean, I'm just saying, I was six years on the liquor board, so.
Oh, okay.
So, um.
So you might know that.
Distillery in town.
Never had that come up with a liquor board, but I do know that there is.
That's somebody showing an interest in that building.
Can't see it.
It's my own keyboard layout and so my fingers go to.
Obviously, well, that's what she'll come in, I'm sure. It was her fault then.
But anyway, you know, I take the blame.
What, what Dave was bringing up about liquor in relation to church being right across the street.
All of those things are factors that have to be addressed.
I'm thinking of Baltimore though, because there are a lot of liquor stores down there. Baltimore.
Oh, gosh.
Local liquor bars, local.
Actually, a brewery in a church in Baltimore.
There are several.
Oh.
That's the ministry of brewing.
Yes, it's fantastic.
I had a friend of mine open one in Pittsburgh, the first one, they called it the Church Brew Works.
Have you been there?
Well, I knew the owners.
It's, it's an incredible building when you're inside, it's just like.
I was there when they started it, I used to, I used to work for the father of the owner or the son that runs it.
Even when there's not alcohol, the room loosens up.
But the ministry of brewing is weird because the foyer still smells like incense.
Yes, well, and just sipping beer in front of the Stations of the Cross just.
Yeah, they're, oh, well, you know, they're, they're discalced, the nuns are just, there's a whole order of people who are discalced. I don't remember what that meant.
Now, one of the things that I think we should have in our comprehensive plan will be a list of whatever tables we'll put in. I'll forward this to you so you'll have that and I, and I thought.
Yes, table load charts.
I had this list that I was going to go over with Gary and I, how all doing that? And then threatening it, we had talked about it and I was, you know, I was looking for large bodies to go with me because I know getting this data, but Randolph has come through and is, was able to provide some links. We had talked last time about maybe having links that we could point people to. When he started looking into that, I was like, well, um and I haven't put tables together yet. And my thought was that, and concurrently, you offered that you could put something, you might be able to put some together. Um I work with Excel all the time, I know I can go through there because there's a fair amount of data that's out there. And I think we can populate a lot of this, but there's still going to be some that comes from uh the town. And I, I, I just believe when we start talking about types of residences, I know that there's water bills to go out. I'm sure we must have some sense of the, you know, we're sending it to a, you know, a mixed use building, the, the water bill, to a landlord or I, I, I don't know what kind of information. But the census has us at a little bit over fourteen hundred is what I was seeing out here. And the previous census was showing thirteen forty to thirteen sixty. So it was like a fifty person increase for the census for New Windsor. And we know the hill, up the hill has to be more than fifty that came in, but um but there are numbers that are out there, at least it's going in that right direction. I was envisioning that it was going the other direction, we were going to show less of a census. But there are census, there is census information about gender, sex, age, education, a lot of the tables that we have out there. So I'm, I'm more than willing to go through and pull the stuff out of there and do the first round of the tables.
Okay.
But there, and then um between now and the next meeting, um but they're just, not all of it's out there. And I'll come to you because I know, for instance, there was something here, and I don't even know if we're going to want it because once we get the data, we have the civil, it's got the landfill, municipal solid waste. And it had, you know, that was something that, that, I, I did not see anything out there and I don't know. And almost all of the charts said it came from Carroll County planning.
Oh, really?
Yeah, last time, because when we did this, we had a planner that sat there and she essentially led this exercise for a year and a half.
And when I was on the Acela this Thursday, there were a lot of things that I had, that I had seen that were flagged that Abigail was going to update, so I'm going to email those to you as well. Um and see if you can get that information.
And there were some things that, that Price had promised also from some of these. So I'll let you know there's also, so we'll both be hitting you with some of this. But I felt like there was a breakthrough though, because I'm a numbers guy. And I hate the thought that we would be doing this without having anything and just putting links for people to go hunt. But I think we, we will have some, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's numbers that um, you know, what. But it's, it's what we have, so I don't know, you know, you know, but I think that's for us, that once we have them together to discuss.
So as we've been going through this whole plan, we've been chopping information that was not solely related to New Windsor.
Yes, yes.
So things like the northern landfill and um if there is not a real pointer to New Windsor of why that information is there.
Right.
I would maybe suggest you don't spend your time crunching numbers for that kind of stuff because I don't think it belongs in our, our plan.
What, what I would like, and I'm, I'm old school, that's why I did the printing. I, in my mind, I thought there were a lot more tables and charts that were out there than this. But if you would look at this and see if anything exists, then that's right, I felt the same way with that. The number of students at the New Windsor Middle School.
It's easy.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah. But uh, you know, there's current capacity for wastewater plant, you know, current capacity for water. I, you know, that's not something we're going to get from the census, that's going to have to be something that comes from Gary. So my thought was that we could take ten or fifteen minutes and run through these and or um wait, I think we should do that. And because I think some of them are going to, are going to fall to you to see if you can help us with it, Randolph. So population change, uh persons by gender. And I, I started this, just, this is where the charts were on there, but the first five, first six, households, educational attainment, uh first eight, all, you can get that from the census. So I will be able to pull that also there. Buildable residential land, and again, almost every one of these tables said Carroll County planning.
Yeah.
So I, but I would think that one is one of the new year, yeah, okay. You specify the nation area, same thing?
Yeah.
Yeah. Exist and use of land acreage?
Yeah.
Okay. Current zoning acreage? Yep. I don't know why it's medium range, but medium range residential development potential, is that?
It's medium range.
By the way, I got page numbers on there too, if that helps. But. Yeah.
I did.
Yeah. Yeah, well, yeah, we're going to definitely pie chart.
And I just pulled it up if anybody wants to see where, what it currently looks like.
Well, I think that when we, you, you got to first start with the table to do a pie chart.
Right.
So let's pull the data and then we'll decide which ones, I don't think we want all pie charts either.
Right.
So we'll go back and forth with this, but.
Yeah. But if anybody wants to see what it looks like.
Oh, okay, I thought you were going to say pie chart. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I meant in the context of the current.
Community planning area, population, I, I, I think that's just one, just strike. That was a bizarre schedule, I had marks on that one that we're gonna, at top, sorry, page fifty-five. Okay.
They were just projecting out?
Yeah, I was working off the calculation from the last census.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, well, I will highlight that to strike. And I will do that in my copy.
That was number fifteen on this list. Students uh from the school, is that, is that something that County has? I mean, obviously they will have it at Department of Education.
Yeah, yeah, not through the county, I'm pretty sure I can get that.
You think you can get that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's in concurrency.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's in concurrency, that information's.
You can get it then?
You can, yeah, you can go along.
Did you go get it?
Not right now, but yeah. Right now, Drew.
Come on, Drew.
Come on. Yeah, 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 it's uh, I'm thinking it was in June, I think it was, it finished with twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
I saw a glimmer, I, but you know what?
I was looking at it not too long ago.
All right, yeah, take, take a look at the chart we have on page fifty-nine. Don't, don't put my effort into the middle school.
Yeah.
Michelle already beat you till it, I mean. Sixty-three. I, gosh, I remember going through this one, sixty-three, but I mean, I think we, I definitely think we need to address something about water capacity and wastewater capacity. Um I think this is way too much. But that's going to be definitely something that, oh. I'll first see what we can get from, I guess Wayne, or would we go through Gary first?
I would go through Gary for number seventeen and eighteen.
Yeah.
And like I said, we probably can revamp that. We just did all this, what Randolph and Gary and Wayne and I were working on figuring these numbers out.
Yep.
May I ask, as I was looking at, again, this is something that I was looking at. I think it's something that's important to consider, but I'm wondering to what de, to what level of detail it belongs in the plan and to what level of detail it belongs more as something that Gary needs to worry about.
I, well, if we have it, then we can get it, let's have it as a point of reference where we are versus where we were. And then we can, then we can collectively decide. Because we really haven't had data to look at as we've gone through these, we've just kind of rolled over them. I guess you also get number nineteen, Drew, that's public school enrollment.
Yes.
Yeah, and then same thing with the fire department.
That's all in that concurrency.
Yeah, okay.
Trying to.
We work it, we don't need to get it now.
Well, I'm just, just looking to see what all.
I don't remember the context about. Yeah, that says the county on the landfill. So, oh, yeah, we, we, we talked, we just, oh, I, I know what it was Price, this, I had a note where Price was going to provide that, but. Yeah, but we, we, take a look at the chart on ninety-eight and I'm inclined to think we don't want that.
I have re-exed it.
Okay, you have, do we x it out?
I re-exed that, we weren't even going to put it in.
On which one?
Uh, the one on page ninety-eight.
And I, I had a note on here, we'd get, uh, Price was going to.
That's the landfill.
You got it xed out, okay, gone. So. Number twenty-one's gone. All right, get up to one sixteen, we get into, I would have to think this comes from Carroll County.
Yeah.
Okay, about the industrial zoning properties and point.
Yeah, our list was really bad.
Okay, yeah, it was, well, it's outdated. So I think the ones on one sixteen, uh, one sixteen, one seventeen, one eighteen, nineteen, I think. Did you have, uh, Randolph?
Yeah, and I think employed persons by industry was in some of that data. Yeah, I got a note at some point, new data needed, I don't, wrote that at some point.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's, it's on all of these.
Yeah.
This is all. Okay, so I, I did not see that, but do you think that was out there in the data? You know, I'm going to look through them and, and then if I can't see it out there, then I'll reach out to you, okay. But are there any of those on sixteen, seven, one sixteen, seventeen or eighteen that you think? Well, I mean, I definitely think the, we're not going to see that in the census about the zoning properties.
No, yeah, no.
Right, okay. Sixty, so the employed persons by industry?
Yeah.
By occupation, okay, you think maybe that's in census, okay. I'll take a look at that, you got the ones on one sixteen and one seventeen.
Sorry, Mark, the one like on one seventeen, partially zone properties. What's our plan, are we going to try to put those back in, update that, get that list updated?
Yeah, uh, that's.
Randolph.
Randolph.
Look, so that's all our businesses in town?
Yes, I think it is.
You think Randolph is going to have that?
Oh, I, no.
I mean, you think they're going to have the businesses in town? I was gonna, yeah, I have a layer for um town zoning and that was going to go property by property. See which ones hit, you mark.
Twenty-one is the last that they have on, on line.
I'm trying it.
I mean, where do we get twenty, either two thousand and seven or twenty-two?
She'll get, she gave me the contact, I'll see though, email me the, the current.
Sure.
So yeah, twenty, is that the thing going on still?
Most of the census they are saying twenty-one, because that's what it was. I, I don't know how the census, but I'm seeing say twenty-one in most cases.
Yes.
I think because of COVID, supposed to be the twenty census, but I, I'm wondering if they're designated, is it twenty-one census?
Let's see, Mark, have you really updated some census data?
Well, oh, they're always updating stuff, but, you know, I, I think it just boos us.
So you think this information will be.
Take a look at the chart. And then, if you can update. What was it, was there agreement, disagreement?
Um, so like on one seventeen, um Randolph thinks he has a layer that may show it, but I think we'll let him give that a whirl.
Right.
Once we get that, though, we should bounce that off the town, because I think if we have this, you know, businesses in town, we need to provide our five years in year.
Yep.
So we want to make sure we don't miss any.
Well, do we, do we want to just take that on ourselves then, do this?
Um, well, I guess it would be interesting to see if there's a, a, a layer that, see how accurate it is.
Yeah, I want to see what Kim's list has. The one twenty is accessible tax based by land use. You know, I got on your note that the county provided that, but I'm not sure that was really. You think, you know, I just, my note, I, I don't, I don't have it xed out, I don't know if anybody else has that one xed out. Because that's the whole county, but.
Yeah, I had the same thing, get info from county.
Yeah.
I still have that in the draft, so it wasn't removed.
Okay. And before the store structures, I think that's going to be us. And before the historic structures, I think that's gonna be us. County have anything like that?
Yeah, historic segments, historic farms and historic districts.
Okay.
Would that all be considered just historic?
Well, I'm seeing farms on here, I'm seeing houses. There's a list on one thirty-five of what we had in here.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I can, I can.
Okay. Oh, good point.
Heritage committee would also pry out and get them too.
Yep. But person that kept, used to keep track of that was Bryce. I think there's somebody intimately who's involved with the heritage committee, and there's not any finance, I mean, any numbers people. So I have a feeling that may have started the slide.
Yeah.
I'm just saying. Okay. The, the, oh, yeah, this has gotta come from, uh, this has the residential, I'm sorry, one sixty-three, it's the residential zoning acreage. They all take that case. Almost all, yeah, but I don't think we, we would have that one. Yeah, as a housing type. Oh, just like I missed one, the residential was, yeah, residential was running, it was one sixty-three. And it said one sixty-four, yeah. Oh, that's outside of town, and it's one's in, one's out. The housing, wouldn't we have that, Dave? Number of units, because we would have to do the, the billing.
I'm looking at the, the chart on one sixty-four.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, it's one sixty-five, my mistake. Yeah, one sixty-four is the residential zoning acreage, outside of town.
Michelle, CPA, what you're saying is town limits, right?
Community planning area.
For this document, what, where, where am I looking at?
CPA.
Community planning area.
Are we using, is that, I remember we had a discussion about that, but I wasn't sure, the hills were synonymous?
They're not.
No, not ordinarily, um, because the CPA, I thought, included, they changed the letters on these things all the time for me. But the growth area boundary, is what it used to be called.
That's CPA, okay.
That was my understanding, but, you know, I'm.
I'll get you the glossary.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's the growth area bla, boundary and the community planning area, and then the, the town limits, and there's a very weird Venn diagram within them.
I guess the town would have something that should, at least, single family and.
Yes, and there we have it.
See, I would think that, you know, it says source US census, but I, I, you know, what, what I have in mind is that we must, when we're sending, and I, I'm not gonna ask, ask you for specifics, but I would think when they're sending out the water bills, that they would know, when you're sending out a water bill, whether it is a single-family dwelling, a multiple-family, you know, apartment.
It depends, some of, I think some of the older multi-families are sing, are single meters.
Right, so it depends, it depends how it's set up, it's an EDU, the end dwelling unit, right, so if it's single, and they each have around a meter, you have, you know, multiple hills going to the same address, as opposed to, Michelle, off the bottom as well, then, but, you know, if they only have one meter going to a, a five-apartment place, and we wouldn't know.
Shouldn't you be able to tell by the building permits issued, that would say right on the building permit, what, what kind of house it is?
But somebody had to go through and look at a hundred years worth of building permits. And if there were new building permits, you would try to figure that out.
I didn't see anything in the census, but, but.
I'm just thinking, some of the old properties.
But the new ones, like, sneakers and stuff they should have, yeah.
But we know what they are by looking at them.
That's true, they're all single.
I'm assuming the census asks that, one of the questions, type of dwelling degree, right?
I don't remember.
And whether it's the long form or the short form.
Yeah, that's true.
Very true.
These charts go, and they get up to C and D, D, I mean, you've probably got three hundred.
For checking off single family for some reason.
There's twenty-two questions, but I'm fed up with this, and I'm sending it in the way it is. A whole sort of biblical concept of the census that we all have to go back to Bethlehem and be counted.
There you go.
Okay. I thought the one on sixty-seven was really interesting about the cash rent, and it says it came from the census, but, you know, how many units are less than three hundred a month?
Two, they're two units.
Just about the same number of, as kids go to New Windsor Middle School.
What's that, there's two?
There's two, God, holy no's.
But again, that was back.
That was back.
Forty years ago.
That was back.
But there's only nine over a thousand or more.
Yeah, now, that's definitely changed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's eleven now. But, um, I, I, I did not see that in there, but the housing part, um, it's got age of housing, though. Of course, I guess units. Well, if I see how many housing units we have, because I know there's housing units out there, the ones that, that does be just the, the housing units, if there's more housing units, we aren't gonna be adding older houses.
Unless someone has, you know, someone passes, and then it's, and they break that house up into four apartments.
Right, but there's one we have on, uh, page one sixty-eight, that's just number of units by age. So you're not gonna, you're not gonna add any nineteen sixty, nineteen sixty-nine houses, because, you know, they're all.
Not if, irrespective of the number of apartments in it, it is just one building for ages purposes.
That's if you're gonna get that number to add up.
Well, that's ultimately where I'm going with this, of the number of units. If I find something in the census versus what we're, we're billing, um, but, and then, uh.
My data brain would love to see a breakdown more of the nineteen thirty-nine or earlier, because of the town's pride and its history.
Where is that going to come from?
Yeah.
That would be a nice little, you know, volunteer, you know, just wanna spend some time on a weekend, because those are the people more willing to talk about and do a census than the ones that are in the probably sixty to current.
Yeah, well, and also, I, I'm sure, given all of the new development, that there's a substantial increase in the post-March two thousand's number.
And the thirty-nine or earlier, I'm gonna check at the, uh, see what might be available through the museum, because. All right. And then the last one on one seventy-one, I think will have to come from you guys, and that's land use designation acreage. Okay. All right. I think that took twenty minutes, not fifteen, sorry, cut into your time.
That's okay.
So, thank you for indulging me. I'll work with different people for, for our next time. I'm excited, because there's numbers. No, I'm sorry, I forgot Randolph, because you're the, at least the third person that's been involved with us from Carroll County planning on this, so you don't have the history. And we're, we're kind of mellow from that now, but when we went through this, Dave and I, and Glenn, you were part of it too, right?
Again, again.
Person that was leading this all the way through and writing this, changing, was somebody from, Barbara Lilly.
Very driven woman, Barbara. Very driven.
Barb, oh, no, no, Bobby came much after Barb, I think there was somebody between Barb and Bobby. But, yeah, we had Bobby for four or five years, but Barb was with the town, and she just, just led us all the way through this and provided most of these charts, probably all the charts. From the census, and, um, and then, when we started this process, we the mayor was able to, uh, was somebody he knew with the state of Maryland, was able to get somebody from the state to sit in on these meetings. But after about three or four of those, uh, some, of course, staff, the department head from the state came here and essentially said, that's gonna come to an end. And they, they just stripped it off, so Emily Anne is very nicely volunteered, uh, to do this with us, for us. So, and on that note, I'm gonna do sit over there.
Okay, um, so a lot of this going through, I have flagged that Abigail, Abigail is going to update, so Randolph, I'm going to get with you um, to see what can be updated in terms of the newer construction and the data here. Um, in terms of the publicly-owned land map, the park facilities, et cetera. Um, and again, all of the slant use categories and the charts, um. But I did go through and update the verbiage, um, the quarry pit, did we con- did we confirm that it will have an approximate lifespan of a hundred years?
Don't think it'd be quite that long.
Okay.
I'd say maybe.
Because it, I had eighty, and then it was crossed, and then in my edits, it was crossed out and made a hundred.
That's what I remember, too.
Been talking a hundred years.
Yeah.
Maybe that's just because it sounds good.
I went to that, the, the historical society had that, their, the, the Lutheran church, and I would say maybe seventy-five and a few different numbers.
Okay.
Say a hundred years. Oh, yeah?
That's what I always learned to.
Been over there for several meetings today, yeah.
Okay.
Plus, it sounds better, put in a hundred.
Okay.
Yeah, I've never heard that sound.
Who's gonna know?
You will be here, great. Okay, so here is now my question, is it a hundred years from nineteen ninety-four, or a hundred years from the date of which we are writing this?
That's a good question, uh, the belt's been in for what, five years?
Because it's, was developed beginning around ninety-four, and will have an approximate lifespan of a hundred years, a hundred years from when?
I don't think you need to know from when for the structure of that sentence.
I would say that nineteen ninety-four is when it's from.
I think that that is a perfectly legitimate good sentence, just like it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
With a hundred, yeah, two thousand and six is when productions actually started coming, it was permitted.
Yeah, it was permitted and all those indentures, I remember working on some of that stuff when I was at the county.
And in two thousand ninety-five, if they're still open, and they wanted to play, and I'm like, oh, wow.
Yeah, whatever poor souls are working on the master plan then can complain about it.
No, it's Heidelberg Materials now, it's not Lehigh.
Oh, is it? Okay.
It hadn't been, it hadn't been Lehigh by itself for a while.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's always gonna be Lehigh here.
Okay.
Oh, so says Lehigh, yeah.
Yeah, well, and I have, and I had adjusted it to Lehigh Hanson Cement Company at some point, so.
Yeah, that was, that was in there before.
Yeah, I mean, we all say. Heidelberg Materials, you retired.
Okay, um, let me make a note, I may want to make some phone calls to make sure that I get this correct. Because the, the sign on the, the little courtesy of, I think, says Lehigh.
It's Heidelberg.
Okay.
It's, it's Heidelberg. Just, just as, oh, last fall, I think it changed Heidelberg Materials, yes.
Okay. All right.
Honestly, if they put a sign up that said courtesy of Heidelberg Materials, everybody'd say, where is that?
What is that? Okay, I made a note in my copy, um.
Yeah, if you want, you can say Heidelberg. Yeah, because whoever's gonna read this.
Yeah.
I'm so cynical. Pretty bored, I mean.
All right, and then, the only significant areas of vacant land are primarily owned and or used by the town for public purposes, that a sentence we still believe in.
I cannot find where you are, Emily.
Okay, um, it is. Chapter five. I'm sorry, I should have made that clear. So, chapter five. I'm following the table of current land use designation acreage.
Oh, there, it's at the bottom of thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
And we deleted all of the brother service center paragraphs, and the Garber Douglas annexation, and the coal annexation, all of this annexation information was deleted, and then we have the inventory of existing use of land. We delete a lot of the zoning. And then.
I had a note that we were going to put in the definitions of the zoning, of the, our zoning list. Definition of what they are, so I guess the R one, one R one, R two, one R three.
Yes.
What that means.
We have that in chapter one, do you want it repeated here?
Could reference that maybe.
Okay. Okay. Let me make a note.
You know, we refer to the document as plan, I'm wondering if maybe where we have the acronym, it might make sense to have a, the table there, because we, throughout this, we're talking about R one, R two, in different places.
Well, and depending on the way in which this plan is released, what I can do is make it hyperlinkable, so that anytime. Yes.
Once this gets approved, right word, is that, there'll be a publication.
Ultimately, it's adopted, it's adopted.
Right. Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't work in a hard copy, but for, on, in the PDF version.
It will work on our copy.
Yeah.
Sure, I get the bug all the time on mine.
Let me make a note. Okay. Oh, and I had asked a question last time about five oh three and the rest of that. Did you get an answer about that, whether this has to be accessible? I'm assuming that state doesn't care about that the way the federal government does.
We, the, we are, I know the five oh three answer is that we are not subject to that.
Okay.
There are some state regulations, but they don't require all that braille and everything. I can't sit here right now and say what they are, but I can say what they're not.
Okay. I'm sorry, it's taking me going back and forth. Yes. Yes, that once we determine which charts we're going to have, I can create a master chart list. And then the other question that I have, and bizarrely, and for reasons that I can't figure out, it looks entirely different on my laptop than it does on Dave's, which is also throwing me off.
Can't you just make the changes to Dave's and then email it to yourself?
I think that what she's, she's sending Dave's though.
Well, I sent the copy, that, that would actually make it harder because then it would show track changes in two different fonts. And it would, yeah. So.
That's cause you said they were copied instead of shared.
Wouldn't we say they were removing that back?
Yep.
That's showing that that's all been deleted.
Yes. Because on my version, it's also showing all in the same font and it's showing us two different fonts on Dave's and I cannot explain why, so. It'll be a beautiful PDF when I'm done with it, I promise.
That matches mine. That was, that was changed from four to five, is that what? I have one.
Four year circle, but I didn't have anything next to.
I have four crossed out and five on it.
I think I lost.
I highlighted something to come back to. Okay, so.
I'm showing five.
Five it is. Change adopted in my copy.
We got rid of a lot of it and it just went to the municipal growth map, I think it's worth.
Recommended actions.
I never saw that either, yeah. That's what I show, we show under analysis of community needs. I don't show, I tell, we kept the municipal growth, growth map of two thousand and seven. It was on bottom of page forty-three, that.
Yeah. When I kept the first.
Okay, yeah, it's showing that I add language about ensuring that there are adequate public facilities for any potential future annexation, so I need to put that back in. I've got a note for myself. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Where it says that is designated for, we had neighborhood business crossed out and changed to general, commercial.
Okay. I will put that back in. I missed the note to myself there.
Do that whole thing, that whole paragraph, the next two paragraphs were included.
Okay.
And recommended action.
So that whole paragraph, municipal growth, all the way down to recommended actions.
Yes.
Okay. Last word being. Okay. Because word doesn't like my middle name.
They have to, you have to make it a single name as Emily Anne.
Yes. It, it's a long story about how I had two first names and no middle name and the computers in the nineteen seventy-nine, when my father went to enroll me in school, could not accept that. And I had to go get my name legally changed.
Been identified or?
No, just so that it was Emily, first name and middle name. Okay, so going back to my copy. I am to restore. Because I obviously got delete happy here.
You, you restored above. Recommended actions is that you restored everything above that, so that needs to be restored. You wanna go all the way up to municipal growth.
Okay.
Map to restore. And then the first sentence of town officials.
Well, there to do that, it's a municipal growth map down to the front line, you restore.
Okay. Yeah, oh. Well, and I'll also see if I can find if my Chromebook has the right.
What's the new universal?
Yeah.
What is the plugin?
It's HDMI, yeah, but my, my MacBook only has USB-C.
Yep. Macs are going now to be USB-C's. I'm sure you can.
Okay, analysis of community needs, where are we? Okay. I've got it. Okay. So let me undelete on here as well so that you can see that it is done. All right. Um, what time is it? Seven. Potentially. I have a standing medical appointment on Wednesday nights, but I'll see what I can do. Okay, yeah. Sure, yeah.
Or maybe if that's impossible for Emily, we could get Will to come two blocks up the hill for the next planning commission meeting and do it then. As opposed to trying to move medical appointments. It might not work for either.
I will tell him what the problem is.
Yeah. I'm pretty sure I can order a USB-C to HDMI adapter. The Mac store has pretty, has. Yeah, and the Mac store has USB-C to just about everything adapters.
I have, we deleted one, two, and saved three.
Give us the pace, cause even got rid of the next segment. And then identify sites, who's the next one we kept? Yep. And then six, they continue. We kept that. Maybe rework simply.
We deleted it.
Universal. Find, replace. Lehigh. Heidelberg.
Yeah, I have to, if you have the Heidelberg explanation. Strike is developing. Has. See, they made it.
Now build because of zoning, it's used ever again.
This one here, what's the one here? This is, this is ended quarry in Carroll County, or maybe Carroll-Fredrick, starts with an H.
Hyde.
Hyde. Yeah, that's right here, the Hyde Quarry.
Right, I'm John Hyde, right?
Yeah.
Oh, really? I feel like that's the plot of like, just about every eighties teen movie and it starts with somebody jumping off a cliff into a.
Yeah, yep.
It's best to do those in open courts. The closed ones tend to have police that catch you.
Oh, okay.
He read that in a book.
It's a hidden novel, right?
I don't even jump into it. I don't even jump into a four-foot pool, so.
He's just a one-off, great, I heard, from all the time. That, my parents used to swim, and they made mistakes, telling us not to, so of course we had to go find it, and it was not. The police did, called over.
Where are we?
Where's this? On here? Oh. Oh, forty-seven. Yeah, okay, so we have it, the municipal growth. Sure. No, I have that one.
Yeah, I had something about the neighborhood business designation being needed to be reworked.
I had to restructure that.
That was number seven, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't have that.
I showed seven, that we were saving it as a general statement, whatever that means.
Oh, you know what, I gotta go on to neighborhood business designation.
Yeah, neighborhood business designation as well, that's what I have as well.
Okay, I can make it gone.
I had written that in.
That was that new.
Oh, maybe it's across, it's not across the middle school anymore, that's.
You don't know the Hibbert.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was gonna be general, uh, commercial. If it ever actually comes in.
Is it that one of our designation, town commercial?
Uh, I thought we created that.
It's not on the ground anywhere. It's just, it's just a design, it's a zone that has not been applied to any actual real property. It was a little bit of the cart before the horse. But the horse was really around a lot at that point, and we thought the horse was gonna stay.
With five legs.
Of course, it was eating a little oats.
Yeah, just hanging around.
Oh, it was gonna build a stable.
Just galloped away.
Not too far away, it's around, it's still around.
So, what do you want me to do with this section?
So you have to place in the, instead of neighborhood business designation, it's gonna be called.
General commercial?
I thought we created that for that specific.
We did, that's exactly what we did.
So we wanna.
Yeah, yeah, you, I, you don't want it to go away, but just historical interest, there is no land currently within the town limit zone, general commercial.
So we want to change that from neighborhood business, or do you want to leave it as neighborhood?
That's what I just said, it was discussion and consideration of giving the specific property located inside the body, specific property as opposed to giving it by name.
It's the Hibbert property we were talking about, right? We didn't know what was going in there, and I'm, I had, we were just saving that as a general statement in case something did ever happen there.
Right, but continue, continues to be discussion.
I don't think, can we develop that, so it would be attractive for, for it all, for commercial.
To do, and then he never did come in. Clark Schaefer was involved, talked about it for hours.
I still say, you save it just in case something.
Something's gonna, something's likely to come there eventually.
And I'm going to, I'm making concurrent changes. To the, how about this?
Place, how about a general commercial?
On the type of zoning designation.
With the specific property?
Yes.
It'd be the old middle, actually it's not middle school, I think it's spring year. Will we say?
Any usual stuff.
Better say old middle school. Former, former, former middle, former middle.
Former middle. Lisa.
How does that read? Oh, hang on.
Yep. I'm good.
Good.
And now let me just.
And I don't think we wanted to say also it was agreed, I think we just wanted to say that the state, our administration should be ice cream meeting.
Okay.
That would be all right.
Yes.
The.
It's just a good placeholder for us whenever, something comes in and we need something, we can say, yeah, turn around.
Okay.
So it's consistent.
Needs to be discussion on the.
And development plans with all have to be reviewed, they do, I don't know, some of them do quite a lot.
Yeah, that's what basically ended chapter sets, right?
Yes. And we had ten seconds left.
That's good, because we deleted the next section.
Mm-hmm.
It was a physical struggle with Troy, but I think this.
Oh, I do, I.
So it'll work out, we'll incrementally step forward. Get this down.
Yes. And I will order an adapter before the next meeting.
You did that check?
Nope.
Sheriff power.
Did it concurrently?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, I, I don't think I'll ever get new knees, but they, I need them. Wow, good for you.
All those years of piano lessons my parents paid.
Yeah, paid off.
That typing lessons. Back before they even called it keyboarding.
Oh, no, I took typing, exactly.
Okay, um. One of the emails that I saw, that I thought I sent, but now that I figured out what's going on with the email, I will send it tonight, tomorrow to everybody. There's a webinar, it's a free webinar that maybe somebody might be interested in, How Zoning Broke Municipal Cities, American Cities. How zoning broke American cities. I know you and I did something last year that was, that was good, and every so often, I'll get something from planning that, that's free, and pass along. Bobby used to let us know, uh, 'cause I know you have to get continuing education credits, um, that every so often, there is something that will happen up at the county, up at the, at the offices in Westman's. And, uh, if, if there's anything that, that we could go to, if you could just try to make a mental note to let us know. I, I know I went to one, uh, one lady, town lady, and it was excellent, and it's kind of stayed with me, and I saw, I did a couple other ones, but. Uh, it'd be, it'd be helpful if we had to get some notice.
Okay, sure.
But I, I will send around a webinar, so you can sit in the comfort of your own home. Uh, four twenty-seven, Saturday is of April, is a beautification day, we will have another meeting beforehand, so I'll remind everybody. Carnival is twenty-first to twenty-fifth, you already mentioned that, but in May, parade on Wednesday night, like twenty-second. Yeah, that'll be fun, hopefully I can hobble out on my porch to, to see it, because that's a day.
It's all the way around Main Street, it's.
Yep, it's like the old route, yep. Uh, let's see here, our next meeting is scheduled twenty-second of April. The meeting after that is Memorial Day, so we traditionally have not met on Memorial Day, and we still are working our way through this, so, um. All right, we'll, we'll finalize at next meeting, but I'm proposing that maybe we meet the next night, that next Tuesday night, twenty. If you could do a bill.
Mm-hmm.
Because we're at the end of the quarter, that'd be good. Um, any other announcements, anything else going on that people might know, want to share? All right, get a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion from Kevin.
Second.
Oh, second from Glenn, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose, please oppose.
I'm gonna oppose, just, just to have an opposition, no, don't close the meeting, we want to allow here, be here longer.